Welcome, everybody, to the regular school committee meeting of February 25th, 2014. Calling the meeting to order at 6:04 PM. First item, as always, is the consent agenda. If there are no objections, we will consider the minutes of February 11th, 2014, as well as the warrants of February 28th, 2014, approved. Lynn?
I have an issue with the vote that we took on kindergarten. Only because I read exactly what my proposal was as I was reading it. I don't know if this is the time to bring this up, or if we can do this in full business. I'm not sure when we bring that up.
We'll hear what you're bringing up.
Right.
Well, if this is exactly what you were saying that this was, I mean, this, there's some assumptions that I think were made last week that aren't going to come up unless we bring it up now. And one is, I mean, you're adding the kindergarten teachers, and there's a cost associated with adding those teachers. And then you're going to systematically do a third, 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 and take up the cost. So it's going to be great. The cost is gone. So that whole compensation of the cost is gone.
That's not happening yet.
That's not happening yet. So those conversations about those tuitions will happen probably annually?
But he said as proposed by Michael Wood, and that's what it says Michael Wood said.
Right. You're phasing it out. And then, so what you're doing is you're-
We can vote on that.
But that's what it says. It says the motion is approved for full day kindergarten model as proposed by Michael Wood. And if you go up, the model proposed by Michael Wood, it states the phase out.
Okay. And then, what you're doing is you're taking away the parents' options of half-day.
Right.
They no longer have an option. Kids have, they're either not going at all, or they're going full day.
Correct.
And I don't think we can do that. Because we had people here last week, two weeks ago, that were adamant. They wanted half-day. They didn't want that option gone. So the model that you have is good. Just taking away the half-day is bad.
Well, but then-
By phasing out a half-day is bad.
You're not taking away the half-day until it's free.
Right.
Because then, then we can do it that way. Because then everybody has equal access.
But, but again, all learning happens in the morning, and, you know, call us pay-to-pay, basically, it's cheap daycare.
But once, but once you don't have this, this some kids leaving at the halfway point, then you don't have to have all your learning in the morning. That was what-
But now you've taken away the option of the child leaving, just having a half-day of kindergarten.
That's correct.
Because not everybody wants their kid in a full day.
That's ideally what we're moving towards someday, but we haven't voted on that yet.
But why? Well, that's all tied into money. Because at that point, if you're, if you're going to give full day free, all right, what you're doing is you're transferring the burden of that daycare onto the whole district.
Well, that's not how I do it.
And you're taking the option of half-day away. Because some parents still want just a half-day.
I understand that, but I-
I guess if they clear what we voted on-
I think we need to, if there's language we need to fix to make it clear what we actually voted on, then we should do that. Getting into discussion about the validity of half-day versus full-day kindergarten, I don't think is appropriate right now.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, that's fine. So that's, so that would become full business and new business.
Well, I think what you can, what we can do is, we can just clarify that, in fact, the model that we're talking about is for FY15, and we were talking about that we're going to have all-day classes with half-day kindergarten attending. That's, that's what we, that was the intent.
And still paying full tuition for full day.
Paying full tuition for-
So we should add that.
So that was the intent of the motion. And the issues that you raised, Lynn, are, are issues that do need to be discussed by the board at the time, in each subsequent year between now and FY18.
So how, so what does that do to our vote? Because-
So the vote, we should just not change the vote, but we change what the, what the-
Put in-
Put in what we all thought we voted on, which is FY15 only.
Right.
Right.
And the model of FY15 only being full day for, for anyone who agrees for it with tuition, and half-day for anybody who opts for it.
For everyone.
For ops for it. And adding three teachers.
Right.
For FY15 only.
Okay. So we're not voting on all that other stuff that's in there. So we're not voting on these minutes until they get changed? Because I don't want to know-
No, we can revise the minutes as we just spoke, and then you can vote on the revised minutes.
Next week.
You can do it now.
I want to wait till it's written. Because I, because, I mean, I would have, without reading this, I would have assumed that everything was fine. But, and then I was reading it, and I was like, um, we just took away any discussion.
So we'll revise them, and then you can vote them in the next meeting.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. Anything else on the consent agenda? Okay. We'll move along then. Correspondence?
Oh, I know that, yes. We all, Michael said he don't want it as well.
Yes.
A very, where is it? Wow, a written letter from a, oh, here it is. From Alyssa Churchill in Bolton, who wrote to express her disappointment that half-day kindergarten is going to be phased out, and that she has children who are not ready for kindergarten yet, but when they are, she wants the option to have half-day kindergarten. So this is in the packet.
Crazy. So we'll keep that in mind, certainly, when we come to that discussion about future years. Anyone else have any correspondence regarding anything? No?
No, I did get an email from someone asking about when we were going to vote on the calendar, but they were primarily concerned with when the first day was going to be phased out.
Okay.
Oh, I did, actually. I got a question on school choice that Michael probably will discuss tonight.
Oh, okay. Great. We will. All right. No other correspondence? Okay. Michael, superintendent's report.
So I think, given some timeframes of our, some of our school committee members, we can just move, and our guest speaker is not here yet, so we could move the agenda all the way down.
Okay.
Start with little business.
Great. So we will do just that. We'll flip-flop the agenda and move to the FY15 budget discussion.
Is that going to be a prompt if Jeff goes to 7:15?
Yeah. The times are approximate.
Okay. I don't know. You bring up a good point.
I think it's more important that our school committee member, as full of compliment of folks that are here as possible.
We have, we have a member who has to leave early, so we're trying to get the budget discussion in.
Wait a little longer for Jeff to see if he's attending.
Trouble is, Jeff's not here yet either, yeah. Maybe we should, maybe we should do your superintendent's report and then that.
All right.
And we'll get a little closer to the timing. Is that okay with everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Lynn?
I'm just, I'm fine.
Okay.
Doesn't matter.
Let's do that. We'll compromise and split the difference. Julie, you okay with that?
Yeah, I just think, and if you're going through, just to get things back on a timely theme that people might want to have input on, we could do the superintendent reports. There's even a whole lot of, I don't know if you want to mix them. I'm just trying, you know, stuff that isn't usually, no one's ever here to hear this. No offense.
Well, we could do that. Subcommittee reports right now, then do superintendent's report, then do budget discussion.
All right. Why don't we just go through the agendas? I think we'll be quick.
We'll just stick with the agenda as it was initially written.
Sorry.
And Kathy, you might miss a little bit of the discussion. Sorry.
Unless that's brief, too. So we, we do have a guest speaker, hopefully will be arriving soon, talk about standard two, and if not, we'll reschedule her for the next meeting. I'll be doing a taping of our next Neshova Now. Evidently, it may pass session one, so they're inviting me back. And the last day of school, we did have, you know, a snow day again, so the last day of school now is moved to June 19th, and so, you know, hopefully that will mean that we'll be able to make it through the rest of the year without any no-school days. But certainly, each day that we have moves the, the day out by one, so people need to be cognizant of that. This does not impact graduation, though, for those parents, the seniors, that need to know that. We have not finalized the last, necessarily, the last day of senior day. That may be impacted, but that has not been discussed yet with me, so we'll inform parents when that does get settled. But our seniors do need to have 168 days, so usually, if we're going four days, they have to go four days, because we plan the calendar based on the 168 days, so. There was some question about the calendar. We'll probably approve it at our March 11th meeting, or at least bring it back to the agenda at that point. But certainly, August 28th is the first, is the earliest for a start date, so folks who are planning should plan accordingly. Those of you who have vacation plans toward the end of August, you want to maybe bridge them a bit, not go over that last week of August.
Both of the proposed.
Both of the proposed.
Calendars have that as a start date, so it's pretty likely that that-
Did the teacher start date, or kid start date?
Kid start date.
So teachers would start Monday.
So it's pretty likely that would be the start date.
He was talking on his birthday.
That's not. So, and then I, Nancy and I talked briefly about school choice. There really haven't been any changes in terms of, except for one school committee member, and the vote of last year was pretty, pretty over, in favor of not having school choice for K through eight, so I don't think there's any real reason to bring it back up. You know, we have school choice for the high school, and we've certainly been getting calls for the, for it, so we know we'll be able to fill those slots and have the 100 students for the high school, but this, I don't think any need for policy to revisit the questions, so let's keep the existing policy.
Just to be clear, will, at some point, will we get to see the numbers of the grandfathered in students?
Oh, sure.
Just to see how that's-
We can put a chart together.
Moving along, and how many are in each class? I think that would be interesting.
And I'm curious, because I know that we're getting very, very close to capacity at the high school. Do we want to continue to, I know we've got kids moving up, so we've got pretty much 25 per grade for a while, but do we want to fill those slots since it was their capacity at the high school?
I don't think there's as much of a concern as of yet. You know, that may be a conversation for future years, certainly as we, you know, further the conversation about the space study that we have going now. But I don't think it's, it's necessary at this point, and frankly, the revenue helps. So to phase out both at the same time, I think would be very disarming to our existing budget model.
I can't remember, do we cap off the number depending on the number of students?
Right. So it's 25 per grade and 100 per student.
Regardless of-
For high school.
For the high school. Regardless of how many students are in that grade.
That's right.
So now, so the incoming ninth or grade could, even though the biggest one ever coming in would still add another 25 students.
No.
Well, now, keep in mind-
They're already in.
They're already in.
The eighth grade are already, we kept them.
So 14 of them are already in that eighth-grade number.
Oh, so they count towards the 25.
Right. Absolutely.
So there may be no normal spaces.
Okay, so I was just thinking, okay, it's going to be another 25.
I don't know if that's a case.
Right. So there's 14 in this class moving up, so it'll be 15 in the freshman class.
So we're not replacing any school choice student that leaves in K through eight, but if someone leaves in the high school, and now we have 25, 24 in the freshman class instead of 25, are we filling that 25th spot?
Absolutely, yes.
But we are not doing that if it's a K through eight-
Correct.
Grade.
And do we ask our incoming eighth graders, do they have to give, I mean, can they give you an idea of who's not coming, and, just so we can plan? I mean, I know some kids that have other plans.
Are you talking about school choice or regulars?
School choice kids who most, you know, who probably won't come to the high school.
So when we go through the school choice, most likely will be a lottery. We'll number them, and as students inform us that they're not returning, we go through the list and we fill them back in. So we have, we have no-
So you have a wait list.
We have a wait list.
So, but we can't, we don't send out, like, a letter to school choice kids saying, you know, we'd love to keep you, but if you're not, can you let us know? I mean, not, you know.
We don't, because, you know, we have to treat them as our own, so we have to-
So we don't do that to anybody else.
We have to send that to everybody.
Right, right.
But we, you know, we do try to keep tabs on that sort of thing, you know, we, we want to know as much as we can about the incoming class, so, you know, we do want to know if students are thinking about private school, or if they're thinking about going out to a charter school, so, you know, we keep our nose to the grindstone as far as that, and, you know, keep that in our thinking.
That's true. We don't do that for any other kids in the morning.
Exactly.
It would be a little discriminatory.
Right.
So hey! Because we got a spot! We could use a spot! You know, for everyone, so you could have an idea.
But that principle's kind of-
Yeah, we know.
Yeah, you get an idea.
We have a pretty good idea. And the middle schools are small enough that we have a good handle on who's coming, and parents are very good about letting us know.
That's good.
Yeah.
But you know, are we going to have numbers for what the capacity of the high school is, and what we're actually at before we actually force ourselves to go to 25 per grade?
We're at, we're already there.
Yeah, we're already there.
We're, we're there right now, but the eighth grade coming in is 11 spots or 14 spots that we could fill. But do we really want to do that?
But the policy says we do, right?
Yeah, but all I can tell you is the eighth grade class right now, it's, at Hale, is large. What do they have, 122?
113.
So, then our, the physical numbers of kids going from town into the high school is higher. So what are we actually asking?
It's on that.
By adding-
I know where it is. I'll find it for you.
By adding that, you know, by, just because it's a policy doesn't mean we have to put it in. We don't have to add those children.
Right. We certainly can vote, change it, but keep in mind, there are a lot of shifts that happen as we were just talking, you know, kids go out to private school, so, you know, we're up to, I think, 279 for the incoming freshman class. Everybody comes. Everybody's not going to come. So, you know, it might be closer to 265 in reality. So when we add the 11 slots, we're back up to 260, 276. So, you know, we're, we're fine, so.
Except when we stop talking about science and adding on classrooms for science, because we don't have enough spots for science kids. I just, I don't know if it's worth it. You know, is it worth the capital expense?
Well, again, we're not having a capital expense.
But it always comes up. I mean, just last year, we wanted to add classrooms for science, because we didn't have enough, we were going to add the one classroom, plus everything else we're going to do, the upgrades and everything.
Right.
But we, we keep struggling with capacity.
So you're wondering if do we do a cost-benefit analysis of the extra headcount versus capital expenditures versus per student net? Did anyone do that ever?
The major driver for any kind of capital endeavor at our high school is not going to be enrollment. It's going to be a component, but it's not going to be the number-one rated element.
What would be?
Well, in some cases, the condition of the building.
So we're not looking to add classrooms, we're just looking to upgrade the building itself?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, if I were to prioritize enrollment, it's going to be in the top 10, but it's not going to be the number-one driver.
I just don't want enrollment because of school choice to make that the driver.
Right. No, I understand. I mean, if you think about it, 100 kids is roughly four classrooms. And that's, we need additional classrooms, not because of enrollment, but programmatically. You know, we need science classrooms because of what we've offered for science, not because of the numbers of kids for science that's in there.
And so, just to remind everybody, that was sort of the compromise that we had come up with. So rather than getting rid of all of the revenue from school choice, we said, okay, we'll stop entering new K through eight, but we'll keep the high school, because of the, the impact at the high school level seemed to be a lot lower than at the elementary level. And we were keeping those 25 kids per grade as a source of revenue, which arguably was, you know, why we did it in the first place. So just a, just a reminder that there's two sides to it. It's not all about the, the capital improvements that will, they will cause. There's also the other side of it, is that the revenue that they're bringing in to us. Just, just a reminder.
So the other piece is-
Just for Bolton, was it worth it?
Yeah, well, I don't think so, but, but that was the compromise we made in the vote that we took.
No, I understand. And we front-loaded it to the point where, I mean, we're going to have school choice kids for a long time, because we've front-loaded all the way to kindergarten. So there, the numbers are at least 15 per grade going up.
No, they don't.
No?
Well, we just talked about 14 coming in from an eighth grade.
Not, not every grade is like that.
I know, they scale it out.
Okay. Well, a lot of the grades didn't have room. That's why they worked that way.
Right.
So our population's up.
Then, as we decide, the high school's just a whole different component. Just because it has a big factory class doesn't mean our science classes are going to be overloaded.
And the classes are-
Taking all kinds of different things across the grade.
Exactly. So the classrooms aren't going to be bulging at the seams, because they determine, the classrooms are determined by the number of kids registering for those classes.
And I understand that, but for as many times as I've sat here, Lori knows more about the science classes than I do, there was always an argument that there was not enough science classroom space for the kids. There was always an issue with science scheduling. It was always prohibitive.
Sure.
That was always an issue. So, but, I mean, just because, you know, our population is getting larger, our class size is getting larger, and the lower grades, because you just said, there was no room to put school, school choice kids in, because the classes were physically larger.
Right.
So now, when we get to the high school, we've got these physically larger classes, and we're still going to put 25 in.
Again, they're, they're part of the numbers that we're talking about. They're not in addition to.
No, I understand that. I, because that was part of the policy, you know, across the district, we could not exceed 25, you know, which was great.
So some classes we will be adding.
The only reason that we don't have more in, in all those class, the lower classes, is because of the other parameters that we had in-
That's right.
Because our classroom size is head, because we can't exceed 300 when you get to the, you know, to the junior high. You know, so it has to be 100, what was it, 96? You couldn't exceed 96 in a building.
Correct.
So that parameter was a nub. So what we've done is we've actually, our population has gone to the point where we can't take in school choice based on that parameters.
Right.
But yet, we're still going to the high school, which is getting maxed out, and the way the policy's written right now is, we will make it 25. We didn't have 25 in the eighth grade, but we're going to make it 25 in the ninth.
Right.
That's correct.
Yeah. Yeah, I got it.
It was all in the name of the revenue that it would generate?
We were told at the time it has nothing to do with revenue. It's part of it, but it's a very small part.
Just the opinion. We never, we said it was modular review.
Yeah.
That we always said that the value was, you know, there was value-
It was always about money, Lynn. I know that.
It was always about money, but we always said that wasn't the driving factor, because we weren't doing it just for the money.
We didn't say we were doing it just for the money, but we talked extensively about money.
Why would you do it?
There's cultural issues, too. We talked about being beneficial.
To us, to be honest, culture is important.
We definitely concentrated on the money in the discussion that we had last year, and that's why we talked about what the deltas would be as we go through the next few years and things like that.
And you mentioned the other one. It was to offset what was going up.
Right.
For, for-
Right.
For charter and for school choice.
But 100 kids coming in, that wasn't covering the, the kids going up?
Nope. I mean, 100 kids coming in would just about cover the kids going up.
So it'd be cost neutral, so there won't be any revenue enhancement.
Well, no, we've got, we've got plenty of kids down, we've got 200 school choice kids.
Right now. And as we go through the lines, they're going to phase out.
We lost 10% this year if we're going to do policy. So we're going to come back towards equilibrium probably over the next five years, due to natural attrition.
Will we get more green?
Absolutely.
So just to finish that topic, are you suggesting, Lynn, that we do something other than keep the policy as is?
I think that we need a better cost analysis, like, as to what is going on, because I think that with the numbers in the towns going up, that it's not going to be cost-prohibitive for us to keep doing that, because at $5,000 a kid, capital expense is huge, and they hang on for a long time. Because we're at capacity, high schools are vastly, or we're getting close to it.
That is true.
If we haven't already exceeded it.
We haven't exceeded. The capital expenses are generally 20 years. So they, they do come on, and then they go off over time. Buildings are valued around 50 years, so you're, you, you have a capital expense for about two-thirds of its lifetime. So, and that's the same, it's the same whether the issue is enrollment, or the issue is condition of the building, or the condition, the issue is programming, or whatever the issue. And eventually, at some point, people are going to come to grips with what are the issues, and whether or not there should be investment that follows to address those issues. That hasn't happened yet. And it won't have anything to do with school choice, per se, but enrollment will be a factor in those conditions.
So we have the option of every year revisiting this topic. So in my opinion, for this, this year, I'm only talking about this year, if we keep the policy as is, then we're talking about not a huge impact or a huge difference, because this, the eighth grade going into the ninth grade is the number that it is, and that's-
Planned for.
It's, right. So I would suggest that we go with our original recommendation, which is to not change the policy at this time, and if we choose to next year, do a more thorough cost analysis of the high school, school choice, that we do that next year. I don't know if we need to vote, or if anybody wants to nod their head, or-
I would, I, I don't have a problem revisiting school choice for next year.
You're talking F, just-
Yes, FY16.
16?
16, yeah. I don't have a problem with revisiting them, because I've had a couple of parents contact me about school choice at the high school and phasing it out. And we had a conversation, and they kind of got it, they understood, but I think it's probably a discussion for next year.
That's what I understand.
Right. I'm reinforcing what you said with factual comments from the community.
Any objections to that, Kathy?
No, I second that, and I think that maybe we could get some data together, like, I just Googled it, and this huge Friedman Foundation Educational School Choice summary, what is the academic and what's the social and what's the physical impact on a community for school choice. for school choice. So it has like bazillion pages that we could read in our leisure.
Okay, you read it and you summarize.
No, I didn't read it.
So we have had those debates with a lot of those-
Okay, great.
Issues, I'm sure.
Okay.
But I don't disagree with having the conversation again next year.
Yeah, that's what I think.
But is the vote tonight on whether we're having school choice at all? You already had that, right?
No, I'm, I'm saying that we already have it in place. We're not having a discussion about it. We're moving along. We're moving forward. So there wouldn't be no vote.
Okay.
Sort of no discussion, although we just sort of did.
That's okay. Good healthy discussion.
It is good. No, I just tongue in cheek. Okay.
So just before we move on to another topic, I do, my last part of the SuperDess report that won't be addressed and other issues that are on the agenda, I just want to highlight this week especially, we have a number of competitions that are going on because we have very talented men and women in our high school. We have boys' basketball who are number three, and they're playing number six Westboro tomorrow night. And they'll be here at 7:00 PM at the high school. Boys' high school, ice hockey, excuse me, will be playing on Saturday at the Cushing Academy in central Massachusetts at 6:30. Girls' basketball, they get to play, they're number one by the way in their division, and they'll be playing on Sunday at Pittsburgh State. And then the girls' ice hockey get to go to the vineyard.
Oh, that's great.
And they're going tomorrow as well. So there's actually a long list of very congratulatory items shared by Tanya Richer, Director of Athletics of all of our teams. And maybe an important note, just given who's here tonight. On our wrestling team, James Kilgo was one of our three sectional champions. So congratulations. And a lot of other talented young men and women. So what a great list.
Yeah, that's a diverse team.
It's huge. So the other items will be discussed on agenda items, the joint resolution and the MSBA and so forth and so forth. We're too detailed there.
That's great. Okay. Great. Thank you. Well, I guess we'll move on to subcommittee reports? Or we're sticking with the schedule?
Yeah. Do you have an email from anybody? Jeff?
Well, no, not from Jeff. She does on ELSIC.
Yeah.
Jeff's got the email or not. I don't think so. Okay. Well, then maybe we should do the budget now. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're going to lose Kathy.
It's the proposal report. You try.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is a process that we've undertaken in the past where after the proposed budget is reviewed, we then take a look at and scrub it even further to see if there are any adjustments to it that obviously are obvious and that are not to impact the direction and the goals that the school committee has set, but would change the pace of attaining them possibly because the resources aren't necessarily going to be as vibrant and dynamic as originally proposed. So I am, I have made a list of those to take a look at tonight. I'll walk you through them. As I always say, because sometimes people will then start turning at me and saying, "Why are you cutting that?" You know, I'm, I'm making suggestions about how we can adjust the proposal that was made, put together by the administrative team and myself. I'm not endorsing it as I want to cut it. I'm simply suggesting, this is a place where I would look first to adjust because we still can, you know, move toward our goals in a reasonable timeline, but not the same timeline as the original proposal. So, but I, I think that's always important because it does, it can get-
Important to remind everybody that we asked for this.
Yes. Because I, I like my proposals.
I like-
The original.
The original. So, a couple of things. One is that when the, when, when we talk with our towns through our finance committees and our boards of selectmen, it's an important dialogue to understand their capacity and their ability to afford all of the elements of their budgets and so forth, which education is certainly a, a large driver. It's important to understand, though, that while one town may say, oh, you know, we want to, we'd love a 1% reduction in our assessment, we have to essentially multiply that amount of dollars by three because that's what it takes to get every town to feel the same kind of impact. So I actually search it at the bottom of the page as informational pieces. So in the proposed budget, for example, Bolton had a proposed assessment increase of $577,873, which was 4.83% change. If we were to adjust their, their rate of increase by, you know, roughly 1%, then it would cost us about $144,000. If we then replicated that to the other two towns, then you see the amounts there. We have to also reduce Lancaster, excuse my spelling there, I'm sorry about that, $116,000, and Stowe, $210,000, almost $211,000, to get to a place of significance. So we have to get to about $471,000 to reduce our communities by roughly a quarter of their percent increase. So, so that's an important context to understand, you know, the magnitude of what our communities might be asking for us to do in terms of impact on our budget. So let me walk you through this. I did this in three tiers in this particular case. The first tier is things that I think we can do very easily. Second tier gets a little bit more challenging. And third tier is probably the most significant impact in terms of impact on our goals and where we're going. As, as always, you know, our budgets are dynamic and events change. I want to walk you through this. We, we had done, when we first put together our budget, we had finished the lottery. We had not, we had done original kindergarten registration, but we had not completed our lottery. The plans for what we ultimately proposed were already in place, but we had a different set of numbers for MRE. When I put together the budget, very shortly after, those changed and everybody started recognizing the date, due date, and they all kind of flooded the gates. So because of another adjustment that I'll talk about in a second, it, it was in our minds that it was in the budget, so it didn't need to be added back in. But this will just correct where the money is going to be. So we need to add a teacher for kindergarten and a kindergarten instructional aide.
So this is an addition to the ones that we-
It, it is the same number. It's just, it's just correcting the, we have the same number of teachers in the budget. It's just correcting what they are. That's all. There's no delta in terms of the cost because, as I'm going to explain in a second, we had an elementary teacher in the budget that we knew we were going to reduce out that didn't get reduced out in the database. So we knew we were covering the teacher cost. Okay? So that we were going to be able to afford it.
So why is that showing as a number?
So, so I'm just correcting, I'm putting the MRE teacher in the right. You have a page in your budget that says, I think it says one, it doesn't say adding one kindergarten teacher for, for MRE. And we need that one teacher in there because we got that-
But why do we have to have a cost associated with it today when we didn't yesterday if it's something we're minusing and adding at the same time?
Because I, I'm just, so we didn't show that we were reducing the teacher in the budget. We showed it on our slides. We didn't show it in the budget. So I'm just showing you how it's being corrected.
So it's this, so it, this is the minus? This is FSS?
Right. That's where we're, we're taking it out.
So you're taking it out of FSS and putting it into MRE. So it's a wash between two schools?
Correct.
I understand.
Yeah.
It's a wash for you.
Well, if you don't have the count and we do, it's a wash.
Yeah. So.
Yeah.
So that's, those are showing as adds. And then because we've made the vote last time, so we added the tuition. So I'm adding $75,000 for the kindergarten tuition, approximately $35,000 for the preschool tuition. We scheduled an elementary teacher to be removed from the Florence Sawyer School. So that's, that's just a correction in terms of the budget.
When you say tuition, but is that money that's outside of the budget that's going to go into the budget? Or is this why that we're going to pay in addition to the budget?
No.
Because we're having another full day class.
It's showing as a negative. So in order for the numbers to add up here, they have to be shown as a negative. So it's coming into the budget. So it's going to be added to our revenue.
So negatives are positives and positives are negatives.
Revenue or negative expenses.
It makes total sense.
But how can you, but why would you even put that in here as a, as a reduction in the budget?
No, it's not. Because we're reducing the amount we need to spend.
Correct.
Right.
And we have more now because we added that kindergarten class. So we're going to get more money. So we're reducing it further. So this is a cost savings to our towns.
How are we giving more money?
Because we added a full day kindergarten slot. So now we get more tuition for those slots.
All the people on the waitlist.
It offsets at 60% or 65%.
But not counting for those people that are going to drop out of it and put them in half day? Because that was just a catch up?
We, we, no. We don't, we don't expect anybody to drop out of all day K. We actually expect a number of people in half day K to go to all day K.
But this is at least the people on the waitlist.
That's right. That's exactly. On the facilities, we have about $10,000 for cafe seating that we would take out of the budget this year. Postpone that. We had some money-
What cafeteria was the seating for?
The high school.
High school. They don't have enough or you're upgrading?
So we were, we were upgrading. There are, there are enough for 300 per seating and they have four seating. So we have enough for 1,200 kids. And given how many kids we have, you know, so forth and so on. It's, it's where kids choose to sit. Actually, if you go now, most are sitting with tables now. So it's not, it's really-
But they're also not 100% equally distributed between the-
They can't be either. We should have, so should we, do we need that seat? I don't want kids on the floor that just feel uncomfortable for sitting with-
I think that they need to work to make sure that they get under that 300. It's about 300, 300 and a quarter, I think, in terms of seating.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that not everyone's going to feel comfortable sitting with a table of seven people and dividing from their friends to fill the last spot. That's not fair to think of any of us as grownups, let alone a bunch of high school kids. There needs to be overflow seating. And if this is supplying overflow seating, I'm totally against taking it out of the budget.
My understanding, it wasn't doing overflow seating. It was, it was replacing some existing-
It's rearranging some seating.
Rearranging some seating.
Well, I think that goes to Michael's point earlier. He's not necessarily recommending these reductions.
Right. But I'm just trying to find out, I'm not saying, I don't want to say yes to that. If I, if it's, if we're seating at capacity or close to capacity, I would rather not say no to that line item. If it's replacing some kind of old tables, I wouldn't feel opposed to it. But if it's because we're close to capacity and it's not really realistic to expect these kids to do it, I think I would rather put some money in the budget for some tables.
They're sure it's rearranging the seating. It's the bar seating.
Right.
So they're taking stuff away and putting stuff in.
Yes.
Your pod.
I'm 98% sure.
We recalculated the track bond. So we had some money savings there to be able to take out of that. And then some of our curriculum work in terms of our STEM work, I took money out of the teaching and learning budget. So that's the first tier of where we could take money out.
Is that out of stipends?
That would be mostly stipends, yeah. So the second tier is, gets a little bit closer to classrooms in terms of impact. What I did here, generally, you know, in the first pass, unless it's an exorbitant or it's not related to any particular goals, their, their site-based budgets are approved as, as presented, with some minor exceptions. This time, on this pass, what I did is I went back and looked at our per pupil expenditure to make sure that we weren't overly, being overly generous to one school versus another school. So this begins to even them out further. So these are the amounts that we talked about yesterday administratively.
Do we know what the, what the amount is then, that the site-based budget items would be for each of the schools? Because I don't know what you started from, but $6,000 from Florence Sawyer is, is a sizable amount. It's more than twice what's coming out of center.
Right, because it's twice the school.
It's twice the school, but then where's, but there's no other, but Hail, Hail's not on there?
Well, Hail's on there for something else at $22,000.
So because Mary Rolson's on there, does it mean that it's already not getting?
So it's already, it's already at-
Although it's like the lowest parity.
The, the level.
And what, what, do you know what that $6,000 was going to?
No, I told them, you know, they need to tell, tell me what it's going to be.
Oh, all right. Okay.
I seem to remember in our budget workshop that I was questioning that, the center's school, because it was so much higher than all the other schools. And now they're getting the lowest reduction, or not lowest, but-
Right. They're actually not.
But they're getting a significantly lower reduction than Florence Sawyer. That doesn't seem right.
Yeah. Florence Sawyer has traditionally been our highest per pupil when you combine the K through eights in my tenure.
Is center school the new school?
Yes.
So.
Their, their, their supply budget was way high in the budget meeting. I just, I remember it was like triple the other schools. And I don't know. It doesn't seem right.
You have to look at, the two lines that we look at are general, general instructional supplies and general, and general supplies. So you have to put those two lines together. And they're not, they don't all budget exactly alike in terms of those two lines. So these are combining those two lines when you, when you look at it. So it's going to be over a course of lines. It's not going to be just, so it's, it's really all site-based funds that they, they have an option to adjust. But that's-
How do we decide who, you know, why is it that, you know, Mary Rolson is already at the lowest level and Luther Burbank is only $1,000 over the other level, but Florence Sawyer is $6,000 over and Center's $2,500 over? How does that happen?
Because they're, they're independent schools. They get to-
They don't ask for it.
If they don't necessarily ask for it, in some cases, they may have had other sources of funds. They may have written grants in the past to meet their needs. You know, they're, they're not cookie cutter schools. And so each school has the leeway and the, you know, the ability to have the flexibility to budget their particular needs. Hail is actually the lowest per pupil, which is why they're not on there. And so, and, and the ratio of their per pupils didn't change all that much even with these reductions. So Hail is still the lowest. So, so the high school's there at 27.5. And as you can imagine, they have the largest budget overall anyway of all of the schools. So at the greatest capacity. My goal there was to make sure that they still, their per pupil actually, in my view and opinion, needs to be increased. So this is an increase over last year's budget, but still we were able to look for areas for savings. The facilities in that line, we have, we had planned to purchase a new van for use at district-wide based out of the high school. We were going to purchase it in one fell swoop. We decided to change that to a lease that was $45,000 in that line. We're going to take $30,000 out just out of one year.
Lease never makes financial sense. I've never seen a lease too. I used to sell cars when I was in college. It doesn't make financial sense. It might look good for a short term, but as a long-term-
It's a lease to purchase.
Oh, there you go.
Sorry. I should finish my language. Sorry.
You're like a Saab Jeep Eagle for Joe Volkswagen. What if they're Dodge? CBS?
So.
What is the finance charge if we decide not to?
What are we paying this year?
No, even less. We got, we just did one this year because we were originally going to do it differently. And the dealership wanted, you know, like five and a half. I think we got it for $2.9 million. Maybe even less. I don't want to say this money, but we got, it was really good money.
So are you saying if we decide to cut this item, that then we would get the finance charge?
We pay for it over here in three years or five, four years as opposed to paying it all for-
Right. And we traditionally actually have leased them, lease to purchase. I don't think we've ever except for some, a used one. We've never done an outright purchase. We've excepted used products. So we had a new position that mirrors the new position that we had last year at Florence Sawyer. We decided in conversations with George that we would wait a year for the Hail piece of that, which is a .4. And again, I've decided to cut back on summer work, which is our summer academy around curriculum. So that's a chunk of change there that I'm picking out of there. So that was our second tier. So you see roughly $118,000 is about 25% of that quarter amount, that, that 471 that we need to get to. And then in the third tier, we really scrubbed our schedules. This is, I think it's very, it's doable in terms of time and meeting our current number of minutes with kids. What it does is it really will tighten how the building principals have the flexibility to schedule because we'll have to push teachers to share buildings more. So we'll look at our related art schedule across health, health PE, excuse me, yeah, health, art, and PE across the three schools at the, primarily at the elementary level, K5. And we'll be able to, we'll look to reduce to those, those levels.
Are you reducing what's existing or are you reducing what was-
So we're, we're reducing what we, we have existing. We do have a retirement. So nobody will be impacted in terms of losing their position. It'll, it just means their assignment's going to get changed.
Okay.
Yeah. We had in the budget, an amount, I think we had a total of $15,000 for parking lot repairs. I reduced it by $5,000. So, you know, we'll do $10,000 for repairs at the high school. The instructional coaches- The instructional coaches, which was a new piece, new item for work with our teachers, I reduce at seventeen-five.
Is that across the district?
Those would be across the district, right, building-based. And then we had an initiative around online training that was new this year, that I've taken out of the budget for seventy-five.
What was that, for the high school?
It was gonna be district-wide, actually, but probably predominantly at the high school, to do more training, to look at ways that we could expand our ability to have online opportunities for our kids, for either credit recovery or even enrichment, but to, you know, begin to move further into the twenty-first century where more, more kids need to be trained to be learning online, because that's the experience that they're going to have in their college experience. I mean, some high schools are requiring they have at least one online experience before they get to college, so.
How do you track that to see if it's even working?
Well, an online course works as a, as a normal course does, there are grades, there are requirements for attendance in terms of getting online. I took an online course earlier this year, just to learn how they work. They, I think, can be as rigorous as, as the regular classes that need, and there is just as much follow-up.
Do they do it at home?
What's that?
Do they do this at home or at school?
That would, I mean, we haven't gone that far to be able to give that kind of detail, my sense is that the idea would be that they would be able to do it at home, so that they could also free up their schedule to be able to take courses.
So how many students are taking that now?
It wouldn't necessarily be, I mean, it's online, so it's virtual in that sense, but.
It's not necessarily prescribed to high schools.
Right now, we do VHS, but I'm looking at our existing teachers designing their own courses that would then be taught online.
It's debatable, the value of the, the VHS.
I think each vendor is gonna be vetted and looked at. But I was looking at our own teachers.
Okay.
And training them how to, how to design online instruction.
I see, I like that.
And initially, it would be hybrid, so to push more and more of the existing courses to have more of a presence on their website.
I like that one, I'm sad if that one goes away.
I got an idea on how I can offset that, when you're ready.
So the total there of those three broad areas comes to three hundred and fifty-two thousand. It gets us probably to, you know, two-thirds of the way, to, you know, you split it roughly, not quite exactly a third, a third, a third, but certainly, you know, each community would be reduced about a hundred thousand dollars in terms of their assessment, so I haven't done the exact calculation on that, but.
I have a question.
Probably get down to, Bolton would probably get closer to around four, Lancaster would probably be just under four, and Stowe would still be at like five oh five, probably.
I don't remember Stowe being the jump between the, all the towns, did something happen? Why is Stowe's assessment almost double Lancaster's?
Well, it's not almost double Lancaster's.
Forty-eight?
Four to six.
Well, if you look at the original proposed assessment, oh, yeah, it's four and a half to eight and a half.
Are you looking at dollars and you're looking at percentage change?
Yes.
We're looking at the same.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Well, the assessment itself is one and a half times as big as Lancaster's.
Right.
Have you always been that high?
What's that?
We've always had it that high, I mean, it just, it just sounds really hard to shit.
Right.
Yeah, it's always been the largest.
Right.
Like, yeah, I understood that, it just.
It had the biggest population jump this year, so its percentage went up.
It's a new school, everyone's moving in for a new school.
So the percentage went up.
That's what happened. No, don't go to.
No, we have a new school, we have a lovely.
And the basis of the minimum local contribution has an impact, too.
Yeah, the new formula, a little bit of a tweak, right?
Not huge.
Are we being dense on this approximate reduction by twenty-five percent?
So it, so essentially, if, if you took their full amount, that five seventy-seven, divided it by four, that gets you to the hundred and forty-four thousand, four sixty-eight reduction, that's the amount that you'd have to reduce it to, to get it down to three point six two. You know, in one correspondence, with the Bolton advisory, they were looking for, you know, what would it look like if they got down to three and a half percent? So that's where I was trying to target.
So how do the tiers then play into that?
So I was able to come up with three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars.
All three tiers included.
Three tiers, tiers included.
So there's not really a tiered scenario?
Well, we don't have to go all the way, you know, that, that's the concept, is that maybe, you know, look at tier one.
So we just didn't do the math for tier one, tier two, and tier three? Like, like you did here with a reduction by twenty-five percent?
Right, I mean, essentially, if you, if you only did one tier, you'd be essentially reducing each, each town by roughly thirty-five thousand dollars, which, you know, in terms of their assessment, isn't a large number.
No.
I mean, that's why I say context, you have to look.
Sorry, I was concentrating on this.
That's okay, I'm being patient tonight.
Calling on you, Lauren.
Thank you, sir, ma'am, madam.
Madam Chair.
Two, Madam Chair, two, two, two things to consider. One is, one is more sensitive than the other, so I'll leave that. When we had a presentation a few months ago about the collaboration software that's used across the district, though, I think the woman that presented said that people weren't really using it that much, it was low utilization, we had a brief conversation at that point.
Yeah.
No, and I remember you saying, but some people did use it, but not everybody's using it, and the percentage of people that are using it is small. So it's kind of stuck in the back of my head for these months, because I'm thinking, well, if we're not using it, then get rid of it, because how valuable could that be if only a small percentage of the total population is using it? Or should it be a policy that they're required to use it?
So I would, I would go toward the latter, that, you know, eventually, I think we will be getting to that point, but ideally, to build the capacity of understanding and the ability to do it, we, because of all of the initiatives that were going on, and we've had those conversations.
Right.
Making sure that we're not overwhelming folks, we just felt like this year would be a learning curve year, let folks get the other pieces of the evaluation system, and that, there was a software associated with that under their belt, that we'd come back in next fall and regroup around our analysts.
Because I really, I think I remember it being like ten thousand dollars, and I know it's a drop in the bucket, but, you know, whatever, but I still, like, in my business, I would never have a tool available to me that my organization's paying a user fee for and not be responsible for using it. I understand that people are being asked to do a lot of things, but then should we have the expense? Can you retire it and then bring it back? Is that, is that unrealistic?
Yes, I mean, we've already started using it, we built the, the modules for teachers to use, there are a lot of our teachers who are using it at the high school, and it's not unusual for school systems to introduce things in chunks.
Yeah.
And so, you know, over time, we'll get to full capacity, but it really, you know, to reverse course on it, it would mean a lot of teachers' work gets lost. I mean, it's, it's out and save it, but.
That makes sense, but I would, to make me feel better about this, cause this, this, buying, you know, paying for user licenses and not using them is just like throwing money away. And I understand the psychology around the implementation of it and the acceptance of it, but I would still want us to say, or you to say, this is happening in the fall, you better get used to it, get, get, you know, acclimate yourself to it, you know, I, I don't know if the principals hold, you know, training sessions or whatever they do, have a training session on it, but make a commitment to it.
And that's the plan, that's the plan.
But that has, yeah, so that has to happen. The other one, so thank you for that input.
One good thing about training sessions is, you know, Patrick Perkins, I love his little webcast, that's how I do my company training sessions, we do webcasts for all the training, ten-minute segments, and then people watch at their leisure, so whenever you're rolling out systems, and you, it's much better to have ten-minute training bites on a list, save ten, ten minutes, and then people can watch them and get acclimated whenever they're ready.
Great idea.
Patrick Perkins.
But just a way to kind of reinforce, we're spending this money, and it's for you, it's a tool that you're gonna be expected to use. So that's that. The other issue, the other concern I have is around smart boards. And I know that we had the discussion that we were not going to pursue putting smart boards across the district the way we have because of the expense. And I think the smart boards are in all the schools except for K through three, is that right?
Right.
Is that right? I just wanna make sure I have my facts right.
Well, in nine through twelve, we have a different.
And, so that's my, so that's where this is going, is the nine through twelve. And at the time of the discussion, we were looking at using a different alternative, and I think it was like, it was iPads or something with overhead projectors. And at that time, the discussion was, well, people aren't really using them, they're hard to use, they're cumbersome, blah, 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 whatever. And then I was like, well, okay, so let's take them out of the K through three in this Stowe school and send them over to the high school, because from science and math perspective, I would expect that those would be really valuable tools for the teachers. But then, I think you, Kathy, asked George, you know, and George, I think you said, you're like, what did I say? I think you said it would be expensive to move them.
It would.
So, but I wanna know what those numbers are, because I have a quon in my throat on this one. First of all, I think the high school should have technology, and I think that that really is, like, I'm embarrassed to say we don't have smart boards at the high school, and I do think that the students would get a lot out of it, and I do think that the teachers would use them. And I talked to a couple of teachers in Stowe, and said, so do you guys use the smart boards, what do you think about the smart board? There was no controversy about it, I was just asking a question. Oh, I love it, I use it every day, I would, so maybe I talked to two people who really love those things, but I don't think that, there's two issues, one is, I think the high school needs to be outfitted. I'd like to know what the cost is, and I, and I wouldn't ask you to even make a phone call, I'd be happy to make the phone call just to find out.
We know the cost.
We know the cost.
What is it?
It's about forty-five thousand dollars for a room.
Forty-five?
To outfit it, not to move it.
Right.
To outfit the room.
To outfit them all.
Stowe purchased those with capital class, so we can't move them, so that's not even an option.
Stowe's belonged to Stowe.
Right.
Oh, I did not know that.
That was part of the school creation, I did.
Wow, all right, I did not know that. Well, so now we're looking at, still, the high school, what do we get, are we giving them, what do we give, what are they getting?
So we're examining it in terms of how, our desire is to go toward more one-to-one with kids having technology in their hands, and for the majority of, so we'll have a combination of what we provide, what kids bring into BYOD, and teachers using their own computers for the LCD presentation, which can have a, a software, an app, that can do much of what the smart board features can do.
But without the, without the interaction on the wall, like.
Well, it'd be projected, the interaction would be on whatever device they're using.
So, all right, so then let me try another tack, just because I wanna understand the whole scope of this. So grades four through eight, and all the schools have them.
Right.
And I don't know what the value is in each of the grades, and is it more valuable in your younger grades?
To your point about that, so we are surveying folks to kind of get more of a sense of that, I won't have the data until Friday, but.
Oh, excellent.
Surveying teachers?
Surveying our teachers to really get a handle, I think it will be helpful to our tech plan, but it'll also help to inform, you know, again, we didn't put it in the budget, we would have loved, we had lots of conversations about doing both.
Yeah.
In terms of technology, hands-on technology versus projecting technology, we just couldn't afford to do it.
Right.
And it would be on this list.
Right.
If we were having this conversation anyway, so I made that decision. But, you know, I think that, you know, when we are able to find resources to install them, we're going to, and I'm sure it's gonna be part of any conversation that we have about our high school space, because there are certain contents that really lend themselves to having the smart boards, there's no doubt about it.
Right.
But others, a document camera is just as powerful and will be used more, and we tried, which is why we did it by content, and, and over time, all classrooms, our belief was, is, that it should be by curriculum, not by teachers. So some school systems have said, you know, are you interested in a smart board, or we'll get one for you.
Yeah.
I said, no, if we think it's valuable for the content, then we should have it, not everybody who teaches that content. So that's been the direction, and that's why it's been probably more expensive in some respects for what we've done. You know, and we'll continue to look at ways that we can install them, but it's just not part of the overall.
So are we thinking that the space study effort is gonna encompass the technology needs of the high schools, separate from the annual budget?
Yeah, it'll have to.
Okay.
Not necessarily separate, I mean, there's some things we're gonna have to, we're going to have to do.
Augment.
It's gonna augment and probably become the bigger piece.
So those are all capital expenses?
Those are capital expenses, definitely.
All right, so actually, so it's encouraging that there are smart boards in as many classrooms as there are.
Mm-hmm.
I just wish we had the opportunity to extend it, but that's good. So that was healthy discussion, I still don't like the collaboration software, but if you tell me, if you tell us that people are going to be responsible for using it.
They would be.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments?
I have a question on maintenance. Last year, the maintenance budget went really high, you guys were gonna discuss this at the budget preview, but I wasn't there. Do we ever, I know we had a plan on what he wanted to do, and that's why the budget went up so high. And I was wondering, did he actually accomplish and finish the stuff that he wanted to do with that money? Cause I know a lot of it had to do with the SOI.
In this year's budget?
Last year's. Well, the one that we approved last year.
Right, for this year.
The budget, for this year, right. His, his budget, like, quadrupled, it went from like seventy thousand dollars to three hundred thousand dollars, and I think we took a little bit out of that when we did the budgeting, but he still had, it still went up quite a bit, and a lot of it had to do with the SOI that went out for the science, he was gonna do a few of those things. Did they ever happen?
Yeah.
A lot is being done, it's still been, you know, there's a bidding and things like that, it's still in the works, so it may not be done till the end of the fiscal year, but it's all gonna be done. By the time our budget is approved in the May, you know, late May, some of the projects which are larger or whatever, you know, it's hard to schedule them all over the next three months, depending with the bidding, contracting, whatever, but over the course of this fiscal year, possibly into a little bit of the summer, it will all get done within the year of the appropriation.
The biggest piece was HVAC work that we learned, you know, still had issues from the two thousand and two, I mean, we've always known, but we had a better sense of what they are based on the study that we did, so he's been addressing that on an ongoing basis.
Okay, and that was, that was part of a bunch of stuff?
Yes.
Okay, so then the switches for the classroom controls are in the right classrooms?
Yes.
Those kind of things?
And, and having events actually have events, you know.
Okay.
So, I think to get back to your question, Nancy, essentially, if you're looking to, if you're looking to, as a, as a board, to address our assessments, we would have to, you'd have to go through all three tiers and get up to that amount to significantly impact the, each town's local assessment, to get it to move down below, as I said, four for Bolton, a little farther down for Lancaster, and probably about five, a little over five for Stowe, if you took all three tiers.
Right. And, and these aren't, these are just suggestions, so, I mean, you might find that if we took out curriculum, you think you can take it out, you might find that you, you've got money somewhere else and you can put it back in, or you might find that you might wanna take it out somewhere else, I mean, these are some questions.
Right, these are not control accounts, so if there are, if resources, you know, for example, I did not touch the textbook line, so there's a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars proposed for that, so if we find that that comes in at a hundred thousand dollars, then, you know, that's still in that curriculum money, so that gives us some leeway.
Okay. I guess, I don't know about anybody else, but I was anticipating seeing tier one being a reduction of twenty-five percent, tier two being a reduction of. Well, a half a percent, but yeah, or point. Well, a half a percent, but yeah, or twenty-two, fifty percent.
I'm sorry, yes.
A quarter of a percent.
A half of a percent, and then...
So this represents one percent?
Right, so this represents, so that first tier is a quarter of a percent of our budget, not the local assessment.
Oh.
The local assessment, in order to do, I mean, it's actually, it works out to be very close to being both, but, I mean, as I said, I'd have to reduce, to get to one percent, I'm going to have to reduce the budget by four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. To do it a quarter of a percent, I'm going to do a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. But that's our big, the budget's assessment. Your local assessment isn't going to go down more than, you know, a tenth of a percent.
But if money is a quarter of a percent, we've only gone down three quarters of a percent, not a full percent.
Right. Yeah, I mean, the next tier of costs that I discussed with the administrators, I mean, they're cuts.
What would that look like?
Teachers. Because personnel is the only way to get to large dollars quickly without truly decimating programs.
Would online learning, would that lessen the pressure on the teachers? Would that lighten the load?
No.
Especially with your program, because they're trying to create the core online initially.
Exactly.
Well, we still have it, you're not getting rid of the whole initiative, right? This, they're just not...
Well, this would take out all the training, I mean, again, through...
Any training?
Oh, yeah.
The teachers and the students?
Teachers.
I've had online classes.
The teachers need training.
They need training how to put, how to work with whatever software we look at, Blackboard or Teach to Learn or...
Well, I'm just confused, because I've had online classes, I just go online, I'm just...
Right, but that's you as a student. This is the teachers building it. They have to build the module.
Oh, so these aren't existing...
No.
Okay.
Are teachers creating their course into an online module? So if you, so like, I want to understand, when you have to make the decision, or you make the decision to reduce the teaching staff, that can't be in conflict with the policy that states the number of students?
Correct.
So that has to be taken...
Absolutely.
So then you're forced to remove teaching staff from areas that are extra areas, is that right?
Not always necessarily, you know, as an example, we have, well, we had, we had a grade level that was right at its capacity. If I, currently, we're going to divide it by five, but if I divide it by four, it'd be right at twenty-four. So any new student would put us over.
So what would happen in that instance? If we...
We go up?
It just is what it is.
It just is what it is.
I think, didn't we decide that policy being that twenty-eight was the number?
That's from middle school, yep.
If we get to twenty-eight, then we go to a different...
That's huge.
But it's not, it's usually like a little flump, it's never...
Yeah, I mean, you know, we had, we've had odd, we've had very odd experiences, one year we had a huge, we had a whole, grade two would get to Lancaster, so we had that ascension.
Yeah, I just want to understand, well, I just want to make sure that I did understand...
I would have to go and look at every class, make sure that we are abiding by the policy and get some room, you know, for moving things and so forth, and so...
So if we came back and said, we need you to do something more, it would have to come out of teaching?
I'd be looking at teaching, I would look at busing.
What could you do with busing?
Well, not a lot. I mean, what I'm looking at is going from a two-tier to a three-tier system.
Which is?
So right now, we have two sets of runs, one starts at seven AM, one starts at roughly seven forty-five. So we go to three tiers and figure out that.
Had we ever done that before?
Early on, I think my first year here, I think we had to, it was already done before I arrived.
So that means some kids are on really, really early and off really, really late.
Well, I wouldn't make, I wouldn't allow that to happen, but...
But you'd be forced into that, okay.
Not the real early part.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. Okay, so teachers and busing, you're hitting all the big ones.
Well, I mean, that's...
How about a collaboration software?
It always comes back to the same realization, that our budget is only twenty percent non-salary.
Exactly.
And every time, as long as I've been on the school committee, that's, the light bulb goes off every time, oh, we only have a very small part of the budget that we get to play with. It's very small. And it's what ties our hands every time.
Yeah. I understand. I don't have anything else to add.
Any other questions for Michael and George? I think at this point, this is our time to question, our time to have a discussion, we're not going to vote tonight. Our next meeting is March eleventh.
Yes.
And I think we will need to vote on March eleventh. So, you know, I'm not threatening anybody, you have other opportunities to ask questions of George and Michael at any point, but this is a nice time to do it, if you have any others.
I know you don't want to deal with, you know, getting your teachers and whatever, but did you guys want to see what it would look like, Miranda? Do you want to see what it would look like?
I don't, I don't, you know what, if, I don't want to cut teachers, because I looked at the numbers of students in the grades, and it looks like...
We're tight.
We're really tight.
Classes are pretty full numbers.
And I don't want to encourage irresponsible accounting, right? Because I think that's irresponsible. And if, that's why I say, if there's, and if I were better versed in every line item in the budget, which I admit I'm not, I would probably have more questions, and so I would go back and look at it again. But if, if the dollars you truly have control over are as tight as they are, then, you know, I appreciate the work that you did here. And I would just say, if there was, if there was anything else that you could think of, then let us know at the next meeting. But I hear you.
We described insurances, we looked at, you know, again, large chunks of money, personnel, busing, reviewed again, just to contract, students, I mean, I think it's risks, yeah, I mean, it's all about risks.
How are we going to, how are we going to face that? I don't want to go into that. Okay, okay, thank you.
Well, and I have a question, I mean, we, I know you said that we were too wealthy to get any grants, but, I mean, I find that hard to believe. I would think that if you had an initiative, or there was something out there, that we could get grants.
There are, there are certainly grants out there. The challenge becomes, first and foremost, whether or not, first of all, most grants are seed money, not operations.
What's the difference?
Well, you buy, well, what funders want to look for is that you're going to start something, but then because it's important to you, you're going to keep it going.
Okay.
So they may give you the first year of, let's say it takes a new staff member and some equipment money or something, so they may give you, you know, a hundred thousand dollars. But then, they want assurance that in year two, in year three, you're going to put in that hundred thousand dollars. And so...
But it's something you started, but it didn't, it wasn't feasible.
I mean, those are the conditions that happen, but I've been talking about capacity. We try very hard not to start things that come to a quick end.
Right.
Because, you know, as we see with the kindergarten conversation, it's very difficult to end something. You know, people, even after a year, it's been here forever, and, you know, somebody loves it. And so it's very difficult to do that. And people will be fighting for us to put that hundred thousand dollars back into a budget to support it when we don't have it. So, you know, you really have to, you have to think about the long-term commitment to it. So that's one piece. The other piece is that many grants are matching grants, so they require, they want that long-term commitment right up front. And the other piece is that you have to have the staff willing, you know, we can write grants, but you have to have the staff willing to be the ones who are going to be the innovators. And if we do something very innovative, we're going to be taking them away from what they were doing, which means we have to backfill that.
But what is the possibility of, say, I had somebody approach me and they wanted to teach economics. So if they were to, no, they're not teachers, they just retired and they would like to teach economics. If they were a grant, could they be in charge of it, and could they run a class? And so then, we're not taking away from...
Not independent of an educator, we can't put...
Could you make an independent, make an after-school mentor or something?
It could be an activity after school.
Yeah. So then you couldn't just have somebody overseeing, is that a union issue or...
No, that's a state, well, both.
It'd have to be a certified teacher, too.
Yeah, real licensed teacher.
So it'd be a union issue, too, we have to employ union teachers.
Just have anybody come in and start teaching.
Yeah, but we, I mean, they have, colleges, I mean, they've got, you know, in night school, they've got professionals coming in and teaching, and they are not teachers.
Colleges aren't governed by the same rules. I mean, it would be a great after-school activity. I think we should do it at our middle schools, that's the person I'm thinking of.
Would that, if they were to take something like that after hours, could they get credit for it?
Right now, they can't.
Why?
Because our...
We're not set up that way, or...
We're not set up that way, there are union issues, but that's something that we could explore. I mean, that's something that's a policy issue that we'd have to look at.
So, so there are things that we can do that are a little outside the box, that could probably help us, but they have to be worked out in policy.
Some things, yes. There are, again, there are grants out there that fit those three categories that I just talked about. There is also the piece around our demographics, so, you know, a lot of, funders want to have communities that have a different demographic than we do. So, you know, that becomes problematic.
Except for if we put it up through a beta site, where we could actually create something where we could give to other people that they could follow, I mean, they'd have some footprint, they'd make it work for them.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But those are more innovations than, you know, I don't know, too, things in a way, right? Because you're just not going to, you generally, I've never seen this for all the talk, and see people hiring grant writers over the years in different places, stuff like that, you are not going to get grants or alternative sources of funding in ninety-nine point ninety percent of the cases to replace current expenses. It just is not going to happen. People are not going to grant you money that replaces money you already established instantly. So if you want to do new and additional things, maybe. And even that's hard, it has, comes always with strings attached, and those strings often cost you more money in the future. Doesn't mean they're not right, because if you want to do it, that's great, but, but you're not, I have virtually, I like to say never, but I never like to say never, seen current funding replaced by grant money. I've never seen, I can never think of anywhere I've seen that.
I'm not thinking so much as replacing existing, but, I mean, you keep talking about, you know, twenty-first century and opportunities, and if we can't do it during the regular school day, if we can do it after with, you know, volunteers, because we've got between three towns, we have a lot of retired...
Absolutely.
Experts that would love to help. And still get credit?
I mean, that's a factor, that changes things a bit, but I mean, you know, I think, I think we can figure out a way to work around that.
But...
Because if they want to get credit, it goes on their transcript, if it goes on their transcript, it's an official course offering of the school. So that gets into a lot of tricky things, because then we need certified teachers. But if it were an after-school activity or a club, then, then that's a different...
Oh, then we can't have it all.
That's just a harder not to crack.
I know, but...
It's hard not to crack, but I mean, it's things that can go into recommendation letters, it's things that kids can brag about in their interviews, I mean, so after-school activities are, I don't think are wasted in terms of...
No, I don't think so.
No, but, no!
I was not, no.
No, I know you were.
But I'm just thinking about the kids that, you know, they, you know, the math doesn't make sense to them until they apply it.
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, so you put them in an economics class, you know, because they understand money, and all of a sudden, things are making sense, why couldn't they take that math and, I don't know, to replace it, but if they're doing really bad in math, why couldn't they use it as...
But they, but they have, like, they have a math club at high school, do you have anybody in high school?
Yeah, I do, but not in math.
All right, so, I didn't know anything about the math club until this year, and there's a teacher that actually is the advisor for that math club, and it's fun, like, sorry! But it's like fun, and they go to like competitions, and the kids that are doing it aren't necessarily the kids who are up here in math, which I think is like a really amazingly cool thing. Like, that's the kind of thing, so you're not going to get necessarily credit for a transcript, but you're going to get an exposure that you wouldn't necessarily have. And so a couple of your friends are involved, and you think, well, I'm not going to do that, but they're not really the, oh, I'll do it. So it's really impressive. It's impressive. But have somebody build a club for economics! I would love to see at the high school, and you can take this one on, a how to play the stock market. Does a stock market club...
Yeah, there's a stock market club, and we have DECA, which is a fantastic economics career.
Let's get Andrew involved in that.
He's a stock market club, and DECA I would think would kind of cover...
DECA does teach economics.
Maybe we have an accounting class that counts as a math course. So I mean, there are some things there.
And there's a stock market class.
That's very cool.
You know, I think, we're always on the lookout, and we never turn down things, and we get a lot of small grants, a donation tonight, DECA's great at getting, you know, money donated and so forth, so, but they're on a small scale. But I go through the federal register once a month, you know, to see what's going out, you know, out there. And, you know, it's, it's trying to see if we have something, a seed already in place, whether it would fit, and it's just challenging, it's usually some barrier that knocks us out of thinking that it's worth the time to put it together.
Okay, so, we all done discussing the tiers? Yes?
Yes, my only concern is on the reduction of supplies. It's a huge impact on the high schools' twenties, I just think when we're all looking at, which I consider that, you know, a thousand bucks, that's really, you know, cut out a couple of...
But that's what Dr. Graham presented?
But twenty-seven thousand is a lot to cut out of...
But how, how large was his budget to be in with?
I don't know, but that just is a huge impact.
About four hundred thousand.
Is that above what he had last year?
No, well, I mean, the total, it's larger than last year's, yes.
So did you take out what he asked for in addition, or did you...
No, as I said, it's still an increase from last year.
Okay.
Eight or two sixty-eight.
So we're just getting a little bit, well, you got last year.
I have one clarifying question, so this budget is still the proposed original budget, and the only sort of addendum or additional document is this?
Correct.
There's no new numbers in here?
That's correct.
Okay, just for everybody's education. Okay, so to wrap that up, we all need to do a little homework, and think about the different tiers, talk to people we know, see what's going to be popular and unpopular, and ask questions between now and March eleventh of anybody, Michael, George, me, if I have answers, and be prepared to come back on March eleventh for any to vote. Okay? We're going to move on then. Okay, subcommittee reports, just to go back to where we left off, there's really not a lot to report. The only one on there is Maureen with the finance subcommittee, do you have anything to report?
Not really.
Okay. We're going to move right along to new business. And the first item on new business is a grant for capital repairs, the MSBA.
So, they came out with a grant for repairs, so this is a small, for us, it would be a small grant, and so what we need is, those of you who've been here before, we've done this a couple of different times, but they have what they call a statement of interest, which is essentially an application for the grant. They review it, and at some point, they will vote as a board to invite you to participate in the grant project. This is different... This is different from the other two that we were involved in. This is all at your level because there's no bonding involved. This is all related to our FY fifteen budget, because these are for projects related to our budget or there are two that I'm putting forward to the town of Bolton who's doing the burner replacement this year that's already been approved by their, by their boards. So what I'm looking for is approval of two grant applications essentially. One is for the high school to replace the roof and the other is to, for the town of Bolton, through their capital plan, to replace their boiler, which they, they have already approved.
So the, the roof, how does that affect the three towns? Is that, they're going to pay for it in full?
So we own the high school, the regional school district owns the high school. It's in our budget, it's in our scheduled maintenance plan.
Yep.
So you're the governing body and you're approving it.
So you already have that number that would match it or whatever, whatever we need to do?
In our budget.
It's in the budget?
In the proposed budget.
So is it the total or is it what we'd have to pay if we didn't get a grant?
So, so this pays for a percentage and the, the high school is, I don't have the exact figure out. I should have done that, I should have asked for that. But I can get that for you.
So the line item. Get the line item for the roof.
Yes, it would be in the capital plan, not in that specific document.
Okay. So we're going to get fifty-one percent?
I'm not even going to guess, Lynn, I don't want to get the number out there, I'm sorry. I should have.
The number that's in.
Budget?
The budget or the capital plan or whatever right now, is that if we were covering the total?
That's going to tell us.
So the grant would, if we qualify for it, it would effectively reduce the amount that we would be spending out of next year's budget for the roof.
Correct.
So.
So it can only have no risk.
Right, no risk.
No risk, this is only.
Well, actually.
Try to get some funding for something that we need, we need to do. If this money we're already planning to spend.
Right.
Then it certainly does not hurt to pursue this money, unlike the science.
Right.
Which was not already in the plan.
And, and I get that, except for, I mean, if it costs, you know, twenty thousand dollars, what does it cost to do the roof if it was in the budget?
But this is one of the few times it probably does happen, like I said, never happens, they even were replacing, it's not what operational money, with a grant.
It's a one-time, right, it's a one-time, but it's a one-time expense because it's
capital, so, because it really does in this instance do that.
But it is the issue, now we, we get the grant and now there's thirty thousand dollars that we just add to the maintenance budget?
If, if we get the grant.
What are the chances of us getting the grant? Is there a timeframe on this?
Uh, don't know. They should take a vote, I think they'll do it either in April or May.
So is this something that could happen over the summer if we get a bid?
Oh, yeah.
Excellent.
Okay, and.
I mean, that's our plan to.
Another question that goes along with that, I think that Lynn may be driving it this, if, if we were to qualify for this grant and get whatever that.
Amount is.
Amount is, that we already budgeted and will not have to spend, there will be that amount that is free. Does it have to be spent on facilities or could it be used to, you know, say we, we get fifty thousand, so that now we've suddenly got, we budgeted fifty thousand that we don't have to spend, can we move that money to something other than facilities if we need to or does it have to go to facilities?
So you can vote, you could go anywhere in the money.
It's in a control line, but you, you can vote.
But we could vote to move it?
Right.
Okay.
That's a good thing.
So do we need a motion to accept the grant?
Yes, but I need a precise motion, I actually need two motions and I need somebody to, if you want to read it into the record and, and later we'll type it up.
Maureen? What are the chances?
I can see it.
I think they're pretty good. The only, the only thing we'll, again, that would maybe cut us off is that, you know, we don't have enough data to support replacing the roof, but.
Really?
We have the heat scan and, you know.
You know, he's saying if that were.
If that were the case, yeah.
He can say that's the case, he said if that was the case.
I was going to say, because we must have the feasibility study from York Tech, right?
Right, yeah, we have a lot of those supporting documents.
I think there's going to be plenty approved.
Did he, did he give you the vote page? Cause I'm not seeing the vote page anymore.
Everything he gave me is right in front of me. We need.
Definitely.
Is that what's in the packet?
Yeah.
It's on the bottom of it.
Oh, did you? Let's look at the packet. I am looking at the packet. No, that's just the cover page, it was a. Excuse me for just a minute.
While we're waiting, let's look at the donation to the Neshova Regional High School swim team.
I think a motion to accept the donation of twelve hundred dollars to purchase a record board, the Neshova Russia's swim and dive team.
Second? Oh, you got it, second. Second.
It's a record board.
So the banner kind of thing, is that what it is?
No, it's actually a record board that says all the events and who.
It's a wrestling board thing at the high school.
Well, or the tribe and what, that they'll have twice got the record for.
Right, who's got the record for each event.
Oh, 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 all right. Until they get dumped off of it and it's in the year.
Yeah.
Got it.
And that's how your school stats are, right? So, that's your school stats. So, oh, I beat the school record, blah, 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 the record board.
And are we allowed to say who donated it?
No, you, no.
No, I forgot.
Okay.
Well, there's a company name.
Well, you can say the company.
Oh, from the school, from continuing communications.
What a wonderful company, that's what I was going to say. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Excellent. Thank you.
Can we flip that towards a smart board?
No, you cannot.
Nope, it has to go to what it said it was going to.
Wait, did you see that?
No, that was. Let's skip along, let's see. Anybody have items for the agenda for our next meeting?
Uh, no. We'll have to vote on the budget.
Right. Okay. Um.
Are you ready to go back to that or? Yeah, we can go back to that. So somebody read this.
Maureen, here you go. Did you find it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, what do I need to read?
So it was resolved, having convened.
Wow.
You're going to.
Okay, so I have to say resolved?
Yes.
Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on February twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen, prior to the closing date, the Neshova Regional School District School Committee of the towns of Bolton, Stowe and Lancaster, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest dated, what will be dated?
It is dated two twenty-four.
Dated two twenty-four for the Neshova Regional High School.
Yes.
Located at twelve Green Road, Bolton, Lan, Bolton, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. And it says, insert the description of priorities.
School roof.
School roof, checked up on the statement of interest form and a brief description of the deficiency described therein for each priority.
See it attached. Second.
Oh, is there, there might be one.
Well, I don't know.
And hereby further specifically acknowledge that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the city, town, regional, school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Okay, the answer is second. All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Okay.
Was this the whole roof or just?
It's a section of the roof between.
I have a question.
Administrative wing, between the gym and the academic wing going backwards over the cafeteria.
That's it?
Yeah.
And that's sixty thousand?
Cause we've got to do one more.
Of course we are.
So this is for, this is for the, this is called the accelerated repair program and this is for the boiler at the.
Whoa, I'm sorry.
Florence Emerson School.
Okay, so I read this whole thing again?
Yes.
I read this whole thing again?
Yes.
And, resolved, having convened in an open meeting on February twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen, prior to the closing date, the Neshova Regional School District School Committee of the towns of Stowe, Bolton and Lancaster, AKA Neshova Regional School District, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated February twenty-fourth for the Emerson School located at fifty-five?
Fifty mechanic.
Fifty mechanic street, Bolton, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority category or categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future, oh, in the future. It says, insert the description of the.
Accelerated boiler.
Accelerated boiler repair, checked up in the statement of interest form and a brief description of the deficiency described therein for each priority. Okay, new boiler, I think that's pretty clear. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority is in, in, the School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the city, town, regional, school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
All those in favor?
It's unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Now I have a question.
Yes.
And the opening in that, was that the same as the other one? Does it sound a little?
It's, yeah.
It sounds a little bit different.
Well, there's fill in the blanks and I may have filled in the blanks slightly differently.
Education and the.
Well, no, it was written different, that's all.
Chapter seventy. Yes, joint resolution on the House side, chapter seventy.
Yes, so a group of organizations including Massachusetts Association of School Committees, Massachusetts Association of Superintendents and Mass Municipal Association as well, is encouraging the House and Senate to pursue a joint resolution around chapter seventy. And so they are asking us to encourage our school committees to write to our legislators. And so what I ask you to do is to essentially pass a resolution that, or vote to send a letter to our legislators to pass a joint resolution by March fifteenth.
And the joint resolution is for?
Just to finalize chapter seventy. So as you may recall, for example, we had a number of revisions of chapter seventy in last year's budget cycle that really had an impact, especially on the town of Bolton, as it turned out, and, you know, we want to stop that kind of.
Who's in the lead?
Well, in most, that, last year was a little unique in that there were, you know, it was a huge change that the governor produced in House One. He's not made the same change in House Two for this year and it's unlikely that I think the House or the Senate are going to produce something that's totally different. But regardless, for a broad majority of communities, if, if they did the joint resolution by March, most communities have their town meetings in April, May or June, and so they would have this done. So you know what your chapter seventy is going to be.
Okay, so I'm a little confused. So are you talking about the eighty-two percent thing which made Bolton's go up or?
So the joint resolution is, is just to ask them to finalize it, however they're going to finalize it and agree on what that number's going to be for the total amount of chapter seventy that they're going to commit to in the budget.
Okay, so this is nothing that we get on.
Nothing with the formula, just the total amount.
Okay. So we, we need to take a vote?
Take a motion and, or just direct me to send the letters on your behalf and have Nancy sign them.
All those in favor of sending the letters in support of getting a decision early on chapter seventy, as Michael just described? Wait a minute, I think I said that wrong. I make a motion that we give Michael the authority to.
Yeah.
Move forward with the letters.
Second.
All those in favor?
Now, Michael, what can that possibly do? I mean, how is it that, forcing him to, to do it by a certain date?
Or ask him.
So it, it will give towns and communities like us commitment that our chapter seventy number, whatever they agree to, is, is it, is done. Now we wait until late June and sometimes early July.
Is there any reason, I mean, what's the reason they give for making you wait till that long?
Because they're not done with their budget process.
So we're, we're asking them to.
Get it done.
Pick up the pace.
Right, just, just like, just like we did the kindergarten discussion.
Right.
We did it sort of out of order.
Right.
We're asking them to take chapter seventy and do it out of order.
Just chapter seventy, not the whole budget.
Not the whole budget.
All right, any other, any citizens' comments? Yes.
Do you have a few extra copies?
Yes.
For those in the audience.
Yes, we do.
The tiers, yes, okay.
I thought there were extras that were around.
Any other citizens' comments?
No, thank you.
Any other comments from anybody on the board?
Oh, I'd just like to wish the DECA team good luck next weekend when they head to Boston for the state finals. There's eighty kids from the Shova going, the Rock and Ever.
Wow.
Yeah, to the state finals.
That's great.
That's amazing.
Eighty kids.